Good evening, welcome everyone. To our special meeting for our preliminary 2020 budget. And we'll ask our Township Manager and Secretary Dave Berman to please call a roll.
Mr. DiMillo is absent. Mr. Oliva?
Here.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. McGarrett?
Here.
Dr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Wexler?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
And Mr. Lewis?
Here, thank you.
Please rise and join our Deputy Chief Joe Hagan in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, God, and invisible liberty and justice.
Thank you. Agenda item number two is citizens' input on agenda items only. Is there anyone in the audience looking? I don't see anybody have any...
I don't have it.
Anything?
I guess the question is...
Deputy Chief Hagan, would you have any comments? You're good, you're good, you're good. Okay, we'll turn to agenda item number three, which is budget hearing and preliminary adoption of our 2020 budget.
Mr. President.
Commissioner Holmes, Vice President Holmes?
President, I move we adopt as an ordinance a preliminary general fund sewer fund and capital fund budget, including all taxes, fees, service charges, and other revenue sources provided within all funds for 2020.
Second?
By, Mr. Holmes, second by Commissioner Oliva.
Mr. President.
I'll have a presentation. Do you have initial comments, Commissioner Holmes?
No, I was just, I'm sorry, I was gonna do four, but you can.
Just gonna turn it over for the actual presentation of our preliminary budget to our Township Manager and Assistant Secretary Dave Berman.
Thank you, Mr. President. With a great deal of gratitude to Finance Director and Assistant Township Manager Amy Cuthbertson, all the department heads, and the entire staff, I'm pleased to present to the Board of Commissioners and the citizens of Havreford Township the proposed 2020 operating budget and four-year capital improvement plan. During this presentation, we will discuss the township's goals and objectives, highlight key economic factors, and provide a summary of the proposed budget. We will recommend an economically feasible solution to balance the budget and apprise the Board of Commissioners and residents regarding the challenges that lie ahead. A word about the budget process. The budget process begins in August each year when department heads receive general instruction to prepare operating capital budget requests for the next fiscal year. The Finance Department prepares an initial proposal with each department's original expenditure requests. The Finance Department also prepares revenue projections derived from historic and current trends, as well as a knowledge of local events and economic indicators. The Township Manager reviews the initial budget proposal, identifies constraints, and recommends adjustments where appropriate. With that, the Finance Department develops the final budget proposal. Tonight, we present the proposed budget publicly and ask the Board of Commissioners to review it, make any adjustments you deem necessary, and adopt a preliminary budget. Following this meeting, the entire budget, including any adjustments, will be published on the township's website and shared via social media. The budget hearing will take place on December 9, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. in this room, where interested citizens may express their views on the budget prior to adoption. At the conclusion of the budget hearing, the Commissioners will be asked to adopt the final budget with such amendments that the Board considers advisable. The operating budget funds our core mission of delivering essential municipal services, including Township Administration, emergency services, solid waste collection and disposal, recycling, curbside brush collection, annual leaf vacuuming, park maintenance, recreation programming, snow removal, tree services, code enforcement planning, zoning, community economic development, ice skating, and so many others. The goal of this budget is to operate within the financial means of the community while providing essential services and investing in necessary infrastructure to help meet the needs of the future. As in previous years, this proposed budget represents the ongoing commitment of the Board of Commissioners and management to build and invest in a high-quality community. Long-term financial sustainability has been the refrain in Havreford Township for many years. Both the Commissioners and Township Administration understand that the actions taken this year will have ripple effects on budgets and services for years to come. The Township avoids up-and-down spikes in budgets and tax levies. Thanks to the ongoing commitment of Amy Cuthbertson, the Finance Department, and the entire Township staff, Havreford Township has been successful in accomplishing these objectives aimed at keeping Havreford a desirable community in which to live and work. The proposed budget, the proposed operating and capital budget for 2020 is $69.9 million, an increase of $1.6 million over the 2019 budget. In the general fund specifically, the Township's 2020 proposed general fund budget totals[321.72][321.75]$46.7 million, an increase of $1.8 million over 2019. The proposed budget includes a 1.5% real estate tax increase, taking us to 8.487 mils. For a home assessed at $145,000, the increase would be about $19 per year. For a home assessed at $175,000, the increase would be approximately $22 per year. The underlying economics of the recycling industry represent a significant challenge for this year's budget and beyond. Many nations, including the United States, are struggling with excess amounts of recyclable materials and nowhere to send them. Some municipalities in the U.S. have already halted or severely curtailed the collection of recyclable materials because there is simply nowhere downstream to send them. That said, Havreford Township remains committed to recycling. Although we are not immune to the volatility in the global recycling market, we intend to continue our curbside recycling program in the face of increased costs. The proposed budget calls for an increase of $18 in the annual trash and recycling collection fee, which will rise from $227 to $245 per residential unit. The good news, the proposed budget calls for no increase in the sewer rent rate, which is anticipated to remain at $4.40 per thousand gallons of water consumed. Please keep in mind, our sewer rate largely depends on our water usage as provided by Aqua PA, which is the basis of our billing. As of the date of printing the proposed budget, we have yet to receive the readings that we need for the latest quarter. More details will be provided later in this presentation. Now we'll focus on the budget for each of our major funds. We begin with the general fund, which is the Township's primary operating fund. There are quite a few ongoing initiatives that will continue in 2020. Street pole repainting project will continue. In 2019, we painted 100 poles. We hope to paint another 200 poles in 2020. We have continued maintenance of the care of historic structures, proactive transferring of excess funds to the Capital Projects Fund to self-fund smaller-scale projects and rely less on borrowing. We have continued funding for the Havreford Partnership for Economic Development. We have a 4% increase in funding for the library operations. We have a continued transition to electric hybrid vehicles, ongoing work on the comprehensive plan update, enhanced staff for planning code enforcement, community, and economic development activities. We have continuation of our fairly comprehensive recycling program despite global financial pressures discussed earlier. We have continued shredding and e-cycle events planned for Township residents. We have increased wages for crossing guards in cooperation with the Havreford Township School District. We have the in-house development and publishing of our Commissioners' newsletter, ongoing funding to aggressively defend the Township's legal position on billboards, satisfaction of our contractual obligations to civilian and police collective bargaining units, and continuation of enhanced investment in the pension plans to improve funding levels for our next actuarial valuation scheduled for 2021. As I mentioned, the budget includes a 1.5% tax increase and $18 annual trash and recycling fee increase. We see a change in trend for more property owners paying taxes in the discount period. We resist over-dependency on Act 511 tax revenues. We anticipate reduced liquid fuels funding from Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. We resist excess confidence in investment earnings, and we use prior year's unused state liquid fuels monies for large equipment purchases. We also use prior year's excess revenues for transfers to capital projects. The property tax structure in Havreford Township is shown on the screen in front of you. We see that the Township's portion of the local real estate, of the real estate taxes represents only 18% of the taxes paid by residents. The vast majority, of course, is paid to the school district, and there's also a portion that's paid to Delaware County. With regard to the trash fee, we understand that this comes on top of a significant increase in 2019 that effect that was largely due to the early effects of saturation in the recycling market and increased tipping fees from the county. In 2020, we have to reconcile ourselves with the continued saturation of the recycling market and the nearly 100% increase in per-ton recycling charges levied against us. Based on discussions with Republic Services and other players in the industry, our analysis of the global recycling market provides no indication that the recycling environment will change in the foreseeable future. As a result, the $18 increase is necessary and appropriate if we wish to continue providing current service levels. That said, we are working with an ad hoc committee comprised of representatives of the Board of Commissioners, Township staff, and the EAC in an attempt to improve the economics and efficiency of our recycling programs. Taking a look at general fund revenues, real estate taxes continue to be the main source of Township revenues, and the proposed 1.5% increase should generate an additional $468,000, net of discounts for early payments. Real estate tax, real estate transfer taxes have been extremely high since 2016. This is a function of both high volume, especially in 2016 and 2017, and higher sale prices. We continue to increase our transfer tax revenues, but conservatively each year by reasonable level. Because home sales at new residential developments are at or near completion, we want to avoid relying too heavily on those revenues. Business taxes represent over $2.7 million, but we continue to estimate those revenues conservatively due to the ever-changing economy and transitory nature of some local businesses. Intergovernmental revenues, that is revenues from the state and federal governments, are always difficult to predict as the political climate can change rather quickly. Therefore, we maintain flat estimates for pension aid from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, which results in greater local funding, i.e. Township funding of our pension obligation. Likewise, we have already received notification that our highway aid from the Commonwealth will be slightly less in 2020. So again, that results in greater local funding of highway maintenance. Departmental earnings continue to grow, as evidenced by consistent increases in revenues generated from fees, licenses, and permitting revenues. Our Recreation Department continues to be a revered example for recreational opportunities, and the scadium maintains its positive operating cash flow. Due to efforts from both areas, the proposed budget includes an increase of approximately $93,000 in departmental revenue from recreation and scadium programs. Looking at general fund expenditures, we're always looking for opportunities to increase efficiency and economy of our operation. Personnel costs, wages, health benefits, pension benefits, workers' compensation, payroll taxes, they represent approximately 63.9% of our budget. The magnitude of our personnel cost is not unexpected, as people are at the core of every service we deliver. In 2020, the civilian contract calls for a 3% wage increase, and the police contract calls for a 2.85% increase. The police contract expires in 2020, so our negotiations for a new contract will begin around mid-year. The proposed budget includes additional resources that would serve the code enforcement and zoning functions. More importantly, perhaps, we plan to improve our relationship with the business community and devote additional resources to our work with the community groups, including the HPED. Budgeting in a collective bargaining environment is always challenging. However, this year, contractual increases are offset by changes in natural attrition, resulting in an overall salary reduction in 2020. For the third year in a row, our healthcare consortium secured a 0% increase to our annual renewal perimims for healthcare benefits. Our self-insured prescription dental and vision benefit costs continue to stabilize through 2019, and we are hopeful that the trend will continue into 2020. As of January 1, 2019, the date of our most recent actuarial evaluation, our pension plan showed an increase in funding in the civilian and police pension plans. The Township also made the prudent decision to reduce its expected rate of return in both plans. As a result of the new valuation and the change in expected rate of interest, the Township's minimum municipal obligation increased by 5.8%, or approximately $319,000. Borrowing costs and debt service payments are largely dependent on the Board's decisions on several important projects, including the future renovation or rebuilding of the Havreford Township Free Library and the future of the Brookline School. For planning and budget purposes, we have incorporated additional debt service in 2020 for an initial $10 million of new borrowing. In the absence of final direction at the time of print, we expect that $10 million would provide enough funding to, at the very least, begin implementing any final decisions. However, if the Board approves larger-scale construction projects, it is likely that the Township would need to borrow additional funds in 2021, with additional debt service payments naturally occurring in future years. The 2020 proposed budget also includes a refunding, or refinancing, of our 2014 general obligation bonds. Our financial advisors have estimated this refunding to generate approximately $1.3 million in savings in future service, debt service costs. As of December 2019, the Township has $49.2 million in outstanding general obligation debt. Currently, less than 9% of our general fund budget goes to pay debt service costs. We'll move into the sewer fund now.
Berman?
Yes, sir.
Could you just clarify that it's not, when you say debt service costs, you don't just simply mean the cost of borrowing, but you mean the, the reduction of principal as well?
The 9%?
That references principal and interest payments.
Thank you.
We'll move into the proposed sewer fund budget, which accounts for the sewage and wastewater service operations and has tended to be self-supporting, self-supporting through user charges. Sewer rents charged to all properties on public sewer is the largest revenue generator of this fund, at $4.2 million. The proposed budget for 2020 includes the utilization of sewer fund reserves in the amount of $195,000 to balance the budget, while still retaining very healthy fund balance levels. We propose the use of fund balance for two primary reasons. First, due to, due to an unusual spike in treatment fees in 2019, the utilization of fund balance will provide an opportunity to analyze trends and see if they continue. Second, sewer rents are based on water usage as supplied to us by Aqua PA. Since we had not received the water readings for the latest quarter by the time the proposed budget went to print, our early opinion is that a rate increase would be unnecessary, assuming relatively consistent or even slightly lower consumption. Although the downward trend in water usage is beneficial for the environment, it is not necessarily good for our billings, which are, of course, based on water consumption. Lower volumes of consumption with even modestly higher costs will certainly result in higher fees per gallon for sewage. Other sources of revenue in the sewer fund include smaller items such as investment earnings and lateral permits and things of that nature. The 2020 budget includes no change in sewer rates and will remain at $4.40 per thousand gallons of water used. This may not be sustainable in future years. We are proposing to use a small amount of our reserves this year, still leaving a very healthy fund balance. In an ideal situation, only sewage waters would be in the pipes, but with aging infrastructure, we are plagued with inflow and infiltration issues which inflate the meter flows out of the Township. Future discussion may be a structure of, may be a concern for structuring the EDU fees as opposed to basing on water usage, similar to what's done in Upper Darby and two different Townships, for example. We'll move into the capital fund, the Capital Projects Fund, which accounts for the financial resources used to acquire or construct major capital projects. The Capital Projects Fund is largely a planning document, due to the amount of time it may take for a capital project to move from conception to completion. Simply because a project is in the budget does not mandate that it will be completed. Any contract regarding such projects will have to go before the Board of Commissioners for final approval. Frequently, the Township defers a planned project to future years because of an operational or financial challenge. Continued discussion and a subsequent decision regarding the Havreford Township Free Library and the Brookline School site may change the direction of the Capital Projects budget. As it is, other 2020 major projects include Darby Road Streetscape Project, the South Ardmore Parking Lot Improvements, new lobby and rink doors at the scadium, parking improvements at Mill and Caricon Septa Site, replacement control... Yes, sir?
Why is that not the Septa responsibility? I assume that's our property, or that...
It's, it's Township property, I believe, I'm sorry, it's Septa property, but we, we're aware of the grant for the project. So we're taking the lead on preparing the parking lot. Septa will continue to own, as it stands now, we plan for Septa to continue owning and maintaining the parking lot.
But it's not, we don't match any grant, it's a, it's 100%?
That's, that's my understanding, it's 100% grant.
Okay. Thank you.
We also intend to replace the control panel in the compressor room at the scadium. We have included funding for the scadium plaza construction project. We have continued work on the Pennsy Trail Extension and the Manoa Road Pedestrian Bridge. We have the purchase of additional electric vehicles for replacement of Crown Vics used by Parks and Rec. We have the purchase of hybrid vehicles for replacement of four-wheel-drive vehicles used by code enforcement.
Can I ask you a question about that, too?
Yes, sir.
So, why do we pick hybrid over all-electric? I assume, is there not an all-electric four-wheel-drive vehicle?
The thought was that at this point, we really only have two ports for electric usage. So one is for the public, so we really have two ports that are captive to us at this time. If we do proceed, and the Board allows us to proceed with putting another charging station at the crack, giving us more ports for our vehicles, then we might change from a hybrid to an electric. But we didn't want to purchase too many electrics all at one time and not have the ports to charge them fully all the time.
That makes sense. But is there such a thing as a four-wheel-drive, all-electric vehicle?
I think it's very soon. I, I have heard and read articles about it, I don't know if they're available in the U.S. very commonly yet.
Well, we're not, we're not buying a hybrid four-wheel drive, are we? For the code enforcement, that's just...
No.
We're replacing the car that is...
Plan was for passenger vehicle, yeah.
So would not, we, we don't need four-wheel drive for, for codes?
No, we decided we did not.
Okay. Thank you, I'm sorry, Dave.
No problem. We have, incidentally, we have the potential installation, installation of electric charging vehicle stations at the crack. We have funding for additional fire apparatus for one of the fire companies. We have additional investment in our parks, including fencing, ADA compliance, replacement of backstops, repaving of courts, installation of park benches, all part of our ongoing capital improvement plan in the parks. So as we kind of wrap up the presentation, we'll summarize the 1.5% real estate tax increase, the $18 per year trash and recycling fee increase, a zero increase for sewer rents. We have increased wages for crossing guards. We have a 3% increase contractually for the civilian bargaining unit, and a 2.85% increase contractually for the uniform personnel. We've included funding that has been requested by the HPED, the Human Relations Commission, the Shade Tree Commission. We assume $10 million of new borrowing for capital projects. We continue to transfer funding for designated maintenance and improvement of historical buildings. We can continue to transfer excess reserves into Capital Projects Fund to self-finance smaller-scale capital projects. We continue to increase funding for street pole light painting, I'm sorry, street light pole making painting. And we have a 4% increase in operation, operational funding for the Havreford Township Free Library. The entire staff, the Board of Commissioners, we're all committed to delivering our services at the lowest but responsible cost we can. Departmental spending continues to be on everyone's radar and is constantly monitored and evaluated for potential cost reduction and opportunities for increased efficiency. Cost containment is a discipline along all Township departments, and this proposed budget continues that constraint. Like any other organization, public or private, we have fixed costs and quality services that we need to deliver. Havreford Township exists to serve the health, safety, and welfare of this community by providing the ongoing comprehensive array of high-quality services to residents who have deservedly high expectations. Everyone who works here wants nothing more than to satisfy those expectations.
I, I just had a couple of questions. First off, the EAC had come in several months ago with their presentation and their, kind of their needs for 2020. So if you could, just talk about how we're addressing what their requests were and, and what areas we're not, we're not funding.
Amy, if you'd refresh my memory, I believe they had requested some personnel costs in addition to some project costs.
I don't have their report with me, but I do recall they had asked for funding for an energy and efficiency study, which we were able to incorporate. They asked that we naturally increase our fleet with more hybrids and electrics, which we were able to do in this budget. They also asked for some dedicated personnel, which we believe we're going to address with, as Dave mentioned, the enhanced personnel resources in, in our codes and community development departments. They will be a resource to the EAC. So I think we were able to address many of their, their wants and needs with this budget.
Okay, thank you. The second question I had was, I know we do our road program every two years, and the logic behind that is by doing more work, we're, we're gonna save more, we're gonna save more money, or save money in when we put it out to bid. I guess my question is, do you think that is in fact true? And should we go back to an annual road, road repaving program?
Just, just an opinion, there is a lot of work, and Danny Mariani would attest to it, there's a lot of work with the road program, so to do it every year might be a little bit more, you know, than he would like to take off. But we did speak about doing a smaller one in an off-year, so maybe in 2020, doing a smaller one, maybe not the, the 2 million size, but maybe half of that. So that is an option we are exploring. But we could definitely go back to looking at doing an annual road program and, and see if we can get a plan together for that as well.
I'll also comment that if we were to do a smaller program in the off-years, it would help us coordinate a little better with the utilities when they're opening our roads, so that if there's a road that may be in need of repair or replacement, and the utility's already there, we can work with them instead of on off-years, because they're only gonna do a half-millon overlay.
Right.
And so if we could somehow match that up a little better, I know the residents would appreciate that.
Oh, I think they definitely would.
Yeah, definitely.
Everyone would, so, what does that require? So you said, would that require an amendment to this budget?
It would require an amendment to the budget. We just very recently received the list of streets that Aqua and Pico intend to open this year. So let us, give us some time to digest that. We can present that to the budget, to the Board of Commissioners during the month.
Okay, I think it'd be helpful to see. Thank you, any, who else has additional questions?
As a percentage of the revenues, is the business tax, are we, increasing, or...
Yes, the business tax has been increasing since we really started to put an effort into collection and enforcement of business taxes back in 2009. So we really have seen an increase, and it's steady. We don't have a, we don't have an earned income tax where a lot of communities saw that dip, so we were lucky with the business privilege, it's, it's constant, and it's been constant, and our enforcement is higher than it's ever been. So we continue to try and educate the public, and our collector tries to educate and enforce. So I'm very pleased with where the business taxes are right now.
We're still low, significantly less than surrounding communities as a percentage of our revenue.
I think it's just a different makeup of the communities as well. We, we only have, we have small pockets of commercial development here, where some of our neighbors have larger venues of, you know, commercial development. But I think for the size that we have, I think we do pretty well.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yeah, at the beginning, Dave, you mentioned that you're seeing a trend towards residents paying early to get the discount in their property taxes?
Yes, I did.
Do we, do we have an idea of that numbers, percentages of how many more people are paying early? How significant of a trend are we talking?
I think, we, what I could tell you is, based on what the numbers that we have put together, this year's increase of $486,000, I think I said is what it was, is about $40,000 net, or less than what it would be if it were paid in the, in the on-time period. In other words, $40,000 of savings are being achieved by the residents by paying in the discount period, based on the increase solely. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and it's probably in previous years, we were hovering more around maybe 89% paid in, in the discount period. Now we're just more around 90, 91. And even though that's just a couple of percentage points, we just do need to account for that. That, that does mean more money left in the residents' pockets, but less in our. that does mean more money left in the residents' pockets, but less in ours, because we don't get the penalty or face for those collections.
And then, we talked about anticipating 2020 refinancing of the 2014 general obligation bonds. Do we already have that mapped out as to what timeframe that would take place in?
We're going to get right on that in January as soon as your board reconvenes and reorganizes. That'll be one of the first things we're going to do. We can only do that--
The holdup is on us.
I'm sorry?
The holdup is on us.
We can only do that at certain times with the age of the, after five years in this case, so we will be eligible to refinance or refund, as it's called in the bond world, in January. So we're going to get right on that before rates change any ways.
Any other questions, board?
There's a pay raise for the crossing guards, but the overall expense is less. It's just a question that there's fewer people applying for those positions.
It is, right now.
Can you just explain, the, there's a 25% increase in community development and the 46% in the auxiliary 440, and what they are, what, it looks like in the community development budget, it's about $75,000, $76,000 in wages. Is that one hire, two hires, or is that? It looks like it's all increase in wages, because social security, pension, and workers' comp go up as well as the wages by about--
That is the increase in resources that Dave mentioned during his presentation. I don't think the plan yet has been set in stone as to how that increase in resource is going to be allocated, whether it would be one, management-level position, or two, staff-level positions, but that'll come with the manager as we get into the new year.
The auxiliary expense department is, what's--
Auxiliary expense--
It just jumps out because it's 46% increase.
Yeah, the auxiliary expense, if you look at the detail, it transfers out of the general fund. And we have been and will continue to transfer some of our excess reserves out of the general fund into the Capital Projects Fund, as Dave mentioned during the presentation. And that's really to self-fund smaller projects and things of the like. So we have planned $750,000 to transfer out of the general fund into capital projects for those smaller projects. And we'll also transfer $100,000 out of the general fund into the Capital Projects Fund for historic structure preservation.
Just the bulk of that's the transfers?
Yes.
My last question has to do with recycling. Obviously, support in our decision to continue to recycle. I'm just wondering, do we have any sense of, I know we're paying added fees, and we, do we really know at the end that what portion of our recyclables are actually being recycled? I mean, once they leave Republic, we don't really know where they go after that, do we?
Republic marks it, markets it as a commodity, and I, don't quote me on this, because I can't remember the exact number, but I believe it was--
Don't want to be clued on, don't say it.
More than, all right, quote me on it, more than, close to 80% to 85% actually is marketed and successfully marketed as a commodity by Republic.
That's plastics and cardboard?
That's my understanding of everything that they receive. But I'll get you a firm, I'll get you a firm answer on that further your next meeting.
Because I know, once, like cardboard is recycled until it's wet, and then it becomes trash. So I assume that's part of the 15% that's not recycled.
That's contaminated and it's not--
But also, the plastic's supposed to be clean and dry, which I'm sure a high percent of plastic is not clean and dry when residents put it in the bin. So contaminated recyclables, I'm just wondering, you know, do they really get recycled?
I will, I will get you some further information on that for the next meeting, but I did want to mention that we are working closely with the Environmental Advisory Council and the Ad-Hoc Committee that we've established. We're going to engage in a pretty robust marketing campaign in the new year, so that we can make sure that we're doing our best to help the situation, to ensure that the materials that we're collecting and delivering to Republic will be recycled.
Thank you, David. Any other questions, our township manager? That was a good present, Jimmy?
Well, Andy, I'd be honest with you, I can't vote for this mainly because of the fact that the Brookline School is not included in this, and it's millions of dollars, and until we include that, and what we're doing with that, which you know I'm totally opposed to. So I'm going to vote against this, and also the other reasons are, the House of 435 Sagamore has been totally ignored, it's still a dump and falling apart, nobody's doing anything about it. We can't even get noes posted on people's drives because of our homeowners, because it's supposedly a state highway, which is ridiculous. And then people park and block their driveways, and then they get a ticket for it. I mean, I don't know what a ticket does when a person leaves their car air all day and the other person can't get out of their driveway. And then just other things like that, I could go on and on and on, but that's my objection to it. Plus, the crossing guards were told, I was told by the crossing guards months ago that they were going to get retroactive pay, and they'd been waiting for it, and totally disgusted with what's happening, so that's it.
Can't wait to have a--
Anyone else? Okay, please call a roll.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
No.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Agenda item number five, ordinance number P24-2019, sewer rental charge, first reading.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes?
Mr. President, I move we adopt first reading of ordinance P24-2019, fixing the annual sewer rental charge for each property connected to the sewer to $4.40 per thousand gallons of water consumed or used by said property.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Aliva. Any questions or discussion?
This is not an increase, that's correct. This is what our fee was before.
For sewer?
Yeah.
Yes, it was 440 per thousand gallons.
Any other questions?
This fee didn't go up at all, am I correct on that?
Yes.
Okay. Any other? Now please call a roll.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Agenda item number six, ordinance number P25-2019, trash fee, first reading.
Mr. President, I move we adopt first reading of ordinance P25, fixing the township of Haverford trash fee at $245 per year.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Siegel.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Commissioner.
Just the comment that this is inevitable as a consequence of the increased tipping fees that we face and the difficulties we're having in the recycling market. I have said this in the past, I think that, I think it's important that we strike a balance and not try to pay the entire public works charges for trash collection strictly on a per, on a trash fee basis as opposed to our general taxes. I think this keeps us in the 80% to 85% range of our total costs. Please correct me if I have that wrong.
80%.
80.2, to be exact.
Okay, great. So, so for that reason, I support the increase in the trash fee, and as we saw on the chart earlier, it's, it is not out of, it's certainly not out of alignment in the neighboring townships. Some are a little higher, some are a lot higher, one or two are a little lower. But we're still doing yard waste, two trash collections a week, and single-stream recycling. That's a lot for 245 a year.
Yeah, on top of that, you have, we're able to use the trucks for snow plowing, that sort of stuff, so we're just using, you know, the trucks are being used not just for trash, but for other, allows us to do other, to do other things also.
An excellent point.
Any other comments or questions, discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
To Mr. Holmes is raising of the trash fee, I vote no.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Last time I checked, it was the board raising the trash fee, I vote yes.
Mr. Lewis?
I thought you proposed it, Larry.
Yes.
Okay. Any, any other items to come before this, board?
Mr. Lewis, I, once again, I want to thank Amy Cuthbertson and the Finance Department and the entire staff. There's an organization this size, there's no way one person can do it alone, and Amy put it all together, thank you very much.
Well done, thank you.
And, Mr. President, I wasn't remiss, I was remiss in not extending the board's thanks to Dave and Amy and everybody on the staff who finished this budget way ahead of schedule. Once again, an extraordinary display of professionalism from our staff and everybody that works with the township, and special, special shout-out to our new township manager on his first budget presentation, bravo.
Thank you.
Well done. If there's nothing else, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you.